Okay, I called the January 27th meeting of the whole border. Turn your microphones off. And meeting has been duly noted. Jamie, would you take the role?
Benny Berstudd. Chris Freeman.
Here.
Heather Klenderman.
Here.
Clint Moses.
Here.
Dan Paulson.
Here.
Amy Riddle Swanson.
Here.
David Steyer.
Here.
Jim Swanson.
Here.
Tricia Thompson.
Here.
Okay, we're informed to conduct business. Any agenda order on approval revision? Carrying none. Okay, we have a couple of recommendations and commendations. Heather, would you like to be first?
It's Carissa Crocker. The Board of Education for the School District of the Menominee Area recognizes Carissa Crocker for volunteering at NAP Elementary. She has helped our students with so many things such as learning their SNAP words, reviewing skills, and listening to them practice their reading. She's an excellent role model, showing kindness to everyone she is around. She's very dedicated and we can rely on her when she commits to volunteering in the classroom or chaperoning up field trip. Thank you very much.
Carly Price.
The School Board of the Education, the Board of Education of the School District of the Menominee Area recognizes Carly Price for always taking the initiative to look and plan ahead to make sure things are completed on time and running smoothly at River Heights. Carly is a great asset to the Menominee Area School District. Congratulations.
Thank you to both of you. We can't ever do our work without volunteers and without good people, but thank you. Okay, Board Member Superintendent Communications. Not Board Members? Oh, Community Communications. I'm sorry. I skipped over it because we do not have any unless there's somebody that wants to speak. Is there anyone out there that wants to speak? All right. Sorry about that. Okay, now Board Member Superintendent Communications. Any Board Members?
I attended the Wakanda fifth grade ranger park event and that was a lot of fun. I learned a lot about the different, a whole bunch of different parks, national parks, and a lot of the kids I talked to have been that I was very impressed with that and the research that they did. The level that with that fifth grade with the research, the displays, the PowerPoint, and now that they have just, it was mind blowing in my opinion. So they're gonna be, they'll learn some great skills, which kids will have later, so.
We had a group from Russia tour the farms last week. Reason I bring it up is from an educational standpoint. It's very ironic. In this country right now agriculture seems like it's beat up a lot. Whether it be animal agriculture, dairy, whatever. These were some pretty high up people in Russia that were here and they're looking at ways that they can take the dairy business that we have in Wisconsin and transform it back into Russian. Contrast that with what we see in our country and what they're trying to replicate in their country. It's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
We got a couple of things. Vanderramas tomorrow night for those of you that don't know, so that's always a good event. You know, there are a lot of kids from all ages up there. I'm one of the nerds that watched the entire State of the State address as well, so I like some of the stuff in it. The Governor talked about obviously education and the increased support there. Increased support to the dairy farms too Dave, so I like that part. I thought you'd like that on there. And then he did recognize Menominee family here, some friends of mine, John and Julie Govan, for their work with the corn babies last year and bringing awareness to suicide. So I agree with you too, so.
Thank you Clint. Any other Board Members? Dr. Joe.
Just a few things tonight. First of all, a couple of, I went to events pretty much every night last week, but seeing the hockey team compete was really, was really something our kids couldn't really escape. I know they haven't won as many games as they'd like, but super impressed with the effort and the partnership that we have with our community to have that nice place to play hockey. And then also the girls gymnastics team had an opportunity to see one of their meets and the determination and courage that those high school girls have is just amazing. I put a video on Twitter and one of them, you could see one of our athletes, she's actually upside down suspended in the air coming off of the balance beam. As a father, I don't know how you can watch that, but very well done. Also, very well done River Heights Elementary and our school nutrition staff. We had the Lieutenant Governor, also State Senator Shachner was here on Friday for a visit at River Heights, really primarily focused on the food service program and the great work we've done with providing more access to our students. They were very impressed not only with the program, but also with school, our staff, and the behavior of the students. Our fifth graders, and actually Mr. Price had to leave. Drew Price is the flying teacher at River Heights and very involved with Fuel Up to Play 60. And a bunch of the fifth graders were wearing their yellow Fuel Up to Play 60 shirts and they were helping to serve breakfast and it was, it was just amazing. So very well done. In Board Docs, we always have the professional development opportunities listed there. The two other things, Amy and I received a letter from CBTC regarding their upcoming referendum. Now, I think they're trying to get out and promote referendum and share information about it. They have offered to come and give a presentation to the school board if that's something the school board would like to see. I will say that the letter that we attached has information and their website has a ton of information. So with everything going on, I don't know if the board wants to take the time to hear a presentation or if you'd rather review it on your own. I guess Amy and I can use some direction on that. And then finally, there was an article in the Leader Telegram, I think it was writing in this paper, but I noticed it today, about anti-racism author who will be speaking in Eau Claire on February 27th. So that's pretty close to home and if anybody's interested, there are tickets available online. I put a link into the article there in Board Superintendent Communications.
Who's sponsoring it? I tried to open that and because I don't have a subscription, I can't get into it.
It's UW Eau Claire, it's their bonus service.
Okay.
I can get you more information on it if you'd like. I'll just email the whole board. I didn't realize it was protected by subscription.
One thing I forgot, a gentleman at the farm, the daughter attended the swim meet at Menominee this past weekend. I think it was middle school. He was in super demented, he could not believe how well run it was and everything was over. So compliments to his staff.
Thank you Dave. Okay, any other communication? All right.
Amy, just one thing. On that CBT presentation, is that something that the board wants to take a look at the information first and then decide or?
I'd kind of look through it. I mean, it would be kind of nice to have them, I mean, it has an influence on our taxes and stuff around here, so it'd be good to have a public forum where people could hear it. Depends on how long it's gonna take and how much time we have to give up on a meeting, I guess, under general circumstances.
I don't know if the letter said brief or what it said. Let me look at, see what it says.
It's a workbook.
It just says to arrange for presentation for the CBT's representative. Or request information messaging to share, please email. It doesn't say how long or, we could maybe check and see, you know, what, how long they planned to do, what the presentation would be like. That would be helpful to make a decision going forward.
Oh, if they could go for 10 minutes, great.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay, great. I will contact them.
You don't want to contact them again?
Or Joe, whoever's.
I don't care, I just want to know.
Okay.
Okay. You know, the other thing we could do is we could have before the board meeting, at the next board meeting, we could do it at 5:00 or 5:15.
Okay, that's, that's helpful.
So anybody who wants to hear it can hear it and it doesn't take away from the school board business.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving to the personnel consent agenda. Entertaining motion, should accept that as presented.
Both agree.
Second.
David and Heather. Any discussion? Okay, just, I think just because, I think it's important that the audience knows what we're voting on, I'm gonna tell you. We are accepting the, when we vote, we will be accepting the retirement of Mary Begley, Principal Downsville Elementary School. Sad to see her go. Retirement of Wendy Hayes, who's a speech language pathologist at River Heights Elementary School. And then the resignation of Olivia Irwin, who is a 67% art at NAP in Downsville and 33% art at NHS, who wishes her well. So, any discussion? Heather?
I just have a question. I asked Joe this over the weekend, what will happen with the summer school with the retirement of Mary Begley since she isn't ahead of that? So I think it's important that we, he shared that with everyone, so.
Yep, and what I can share is that assuming the board approves the retirement tonight, then we'll put into motion a process that will include building a profile for the next principal at Downsville Elementary School. The summer school has worked out well. Mary's done a terrific job in a combined position on that. Certainly that's something we'll consider, but once this is official, we'll consider all different options and we got some time because Mrs. Begley will be with us until June 30th. Summer school is ready to go. We also have some great resources in district with Mrs. Mobson, who's done it before, also Mrs. Berg at River Heights. And Mrs. Begley, even though she'll be retiring, I still think she'll be willing to take a phone call if needed. But to directly answer Heather's question, we don't have a set plan yet, but we will definitely prioritize that as we look to the future.
Okay, any other discussion? Thank you, good question. Okay. Jamie, let's vote, looks like it's already up.
Should we?
Okay, motion carried. Well, I guess that means you can leave, Mary.
Not yet.
Well, yeah, true, not yet. Got lots of work to do. Let's go. Okay, next. Action agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the agreement for the pre-employment physicals.
So, second.
David and, any discussion? Jim?
I make a motion to table this until after we rewrite and pass policy 523.1 staff physical examinations. And looking at the policy, we'll get into it more, but I don't really think it allows us to actually approve this pre-employment agreement right now the way the policy is written. We'll need to rewrite it to make sure we actually have permission to do this in our own policy. So I move the table until we finish reading the policy.
What is, what is the board?
You have to ask for a second.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that one.
Thanks. Thank you Dave. So we have motion and second. Any discussion? Chris?
Jim, do you have access to that policy?
It's rated.
Okay. It's in the discussion, what is it?
It's number H.
Okay. Do you see what we're talking about, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's vote. Motion is tabled.
It hasn't stated, just tabled.
Yeah, just doesn't say tabled.
I think it will, once I say it.
Should we just do it like so?
That would probably be the easiest.
Okay, I suppose we've already gone to voting. Oh, something that Jim could clarify?
What?
523.
When we do the policy discussion, we can.
Yeah, let's wait.
Oh, you want to vote after we do this? Okay.
Yeah, let's vote and then we'll go.
Okay, so this is a motion to table this until the policy is finished. Chris Freeman?
Yes.
Heather Klenderman?
No.
Clint?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
David?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Motion carried, so we'll table it. Can we write along to the discussion items? Review 30-year capital improvement.
So, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Kevin Tomaszewski is here tonight. He shared with you in Board Docs the updates of the 30-year plan along with a list of changes for the year. Kevin, appreciate all of your work, appreciate you being here. Is there anything you want to point out before you take questions?
I'll give a brief overview of the changes that were made to it. You have the two documents, the Word Doc may basically follow this 30-year plan line by line.
Can you pull it back a little, pull it a little closer, please, Ben?
That's what I'll be going off of tonight. Before, excuse me, before we start on that, I'll just say that there's a couple reoccurring changes that are made with the plan. The first of those changes is blacktop maintenance, project frequencies. That's likely due to what that we've completed, which is transitioning what we've completed into the start of this plan. So we've adjusted not the frequencies, but the next date of the project. The second area that's kind of repetitive in this plan is occupancy sensor work. We have six locations that we do for complete swap installation of occupancy sensors. Since I've been with the district since '17, we have not had one fail, so we're pushing that out slightly, two years at a time, we'll keep monitoring those and basels into the plan as they, based on their performance. So then going down the plan itself, ASC slash the district projects, probably our biggest one deals with the district phone system. We have a few things to figure out with this plan yet, but it was moved from 2526 up to this year, 2021. We started to see failures with some of our homes, parts of the system, so Katie and I, mostly Katie, are working on that project, looking at different avenues too. Pinnacle project, whether it be phase the project, looking at actually support extensions and grant money, I believe, to recover this project as well as the next ASC project building with the district quota list. There are a couple of the big projects that are running works with the details yet to be determined on them. Moving on to the schools. Wakanda, I made a couple of changes. We did some parking lot work last summer, so seeing as the city owns a vast majority of the parking lot, we're sitting pretty good as far as our own hard surfaces go over there. The digital sign, I pushed out a few years as well. We installed an aluminum sign, again, due to the property boundaries being unique to Wakanda.
Just out of curiosity, where, I never realized that, that we're doing the old parking lot, so where does the line draw?
It might be a little tough to read to explain, but there's, there's some fences. Look for the taller fence. When you're standing in the main parking lot looking towards the school, this parking lot, there are a fence that runs behind the school, separates the school property from the waterpark property.
Yep.
So that line extends through the parking lot.
Okay.
So I read that main drive coming into the, to the grounds the city owns.
Okay.
Moving on to the Oaklawn, side road repairs fine for the summer, nothing major to it, nothing major there, just routine repairs. Downsville's schedule was adjusted again for blacktop work and occupancy sensors, same for the days. We were able to get the new digital sign at River Heights last summer, so that project's been pushed ahead on the regular 15, 16-year rotation. NAP flying schedule is adjusted primarily due to the fact that the classrooms don't have carpet anymore. The big project out at NAP is going to be the LED lighting. We're gonna kick that off next week by starting a lighting study. So the goal is to replace all fluorescent lighting into LED. So we'll be looking at all the things that come along with that. I've gone through these studies before and they're very informative. It'll let us really determine the overall project. For example, switching to LED might eliminate some of the fixtures in the room. So if we do that, we're looking at ceiling tile work, electrical modifications, things like that that'll come along with it, as well as the savings in energy as switching to LED. So within the next month or so, I hope to have those numbers. Over at the middle school, some of our minor side lot repairs planned for this year as part of the start of the 30-year plan. Blacktop maintenance was moved due to the work that we did last year. Another large project over at the high school, the parking lot needs some work. With that said, I'm getting an estimate on the main student parking lot, but I pushed the project out by one year. We're gonna be doing the traffic study at a few of our schools and the high school's one of them, so I don't want to jump the gun on that project and then have the study come back that the recommendation is to rearrange the parking lots and the driveways into the facility, so I'd like to hold on that one for another year. We'll have a solid estimate on that shortly. The pool circulation pumps, I adjusted that one to, they can be rebuilt now. They're newer pumps, I pushed the tenders out, so we'll look at the cost to rebuild versus replace and get that one a little more solid in the future updates. Track lines removed, between itself and culture, I'll send a key pen and I, they're holding up quite well from when the track was installed. And finally, for the planned projects, our, is blacktop maintenance at the high school. I think we can move forward with this part of it. It's the staff parking lot between the school and the track. I don't see that being affected by the traffic study, so I'm gonna have my ducks in a row to do the project, but wait to see if there's any recommendations for line changes or... So that's, those are the, basically seven projects that we have planned this year that fall into the 30-year plan. We're looking at a total dollar amount of approximately $655,000. But again, some of these projects are still a work in progress and we're hoping to get grant money, base the projects, things like that. So I think that number is the worst case scenario number, but I left it in the plan to cover us. So with that said, I guess next year when we do this, I'll do a quick review of the projects that are completed and we'll compare my estimating skills to the actual cost. And I guess use that information to tweak our numbers and look at our yearly multiplier and make sure we're in line there. I would say over the course of the next five years, we'll start to get things out pretty well, but I feel we have a good start on this, so. That's what's been worth for this year. Questions?
Okay, Dave?
The blacktop project at the high school, that's just the main lap then? For next year?
Correct.
And that's replacing the whole, tearing the whole thing up and re-blacktoping?
Yes, I think that needs to be looked at. We have, besides the blacktop being in poor condition, we have some drainage issues there in the springtime, so we'll see if we can come up with a solution that solves both. But again, until that recommendation comes back for a traffic study, I think we wait.
And then, actually, I think, we're talking about $30,000, 164?
I was talking about next year's project, is that right?
Oh, okay.
94,000.
Okay. All right, because looking, looking at those numbers, the 94... Wait, what number were you looking at, Dave?
For next year's project, 984,000 for parking lot at the high school.
Okay.
2021.
Yep. Okay, yeah, I was looking at the year before there, sorry.
Any other questions from Board Members? Dave?
Do you have any projects, if we end up at the end of the year, or fiscal year, and all of a sudden, you know, say we decide that we need to spend some more money, are there projects that you have in mind that could be done that a year ahead of time, you know, that have to be done anyway, for budget reasons or, again, or go the other way if, things turn bad or something like that?
Well, if things go the other way, that's kind of why, that's my train of thought to things such as the occupancy sensors, they don't need to be done this minute, so I say we wait on them and have that money available should something else come up. But yes, we do have projects, and talking with the building principals, we always have ideas of things that we'd like to do. And I have a list on my computer of the wish list that we can roll around.
And actually, I think, you know, what Dave's talking about is trying to maximize the state aid. And the beauty of running all this through Fund 46 is that it's, it's really just a matter of transferring funds. The project won't even have to be complete. So if, like we did this past year, you know, if we get to the end of the budget year and revenues are exceeding expenditures, the board can just make a budget transfer into Fund 46 so that that money is expended and then the project can be done at a timeline that fits the district. So that's, to me, that's really the beauty of this Fund 46 capital maintenance fund.
Dave, kind of covered it, but that was my question, if there are certain things that would be triaged or prioritized? Like, one thing I know, at least on the commercial side, is like some of the grant money that's out there for energy savings and the LEDs, like focus on energy. I know at least in the private sector, I had some that I had to do by the end of November this past year in order to get qualifying money, but they essentially picked up like half the cost on, say, parking lot lights next year, lightings on a couple of buildings that we own. So I assume some of that stuff, like NAP probably needs an update, I would imagine big time on that, but moving some of that stuff around to take full advantage of those grants that are out there? And are you starting to see, like focus on energy, starting to draw back a little bit on what they're offering for incentives?
As of right now, I'm not sure. They always push to entry year projects sooner rather than later, and we have used them in the past. I used a yearly just for the two replacements, so that money is taking advantage of us.
Dan?
I'm probably pretty naive on this, but the high school parking lot, didn't the city just redo some, you know, the street stuff and everything? Was there a traffic study done at that time or?
Not in relation to insider, but, and yes, the city did come into the property and replace some of it for us, which is, we're very appreciative of that. So we'll try and keep those entrances as is. It'll be the rest of the layouts of all the parking lots and the drop off, move, look together, that we'll be looking at.
Thank you.
The one other thing I wanted to point out, and I know that we've talked about this before, really, these are all placeholders. Now, for instance, when we look at next year's expenses, you know, almost $700,000, well, $469,000, almost $470,000 of that is for the phone system. Yet Katie and Kevin are working really hard to evaluate that and figure out if a total replacement is the best option. So even though we have placeholders in here for all these projects, that doesn't mean that by approving this plan that you're approving the project. You know, we, we want to make sure we continue to be very vigilant in terms of our resources.
David?
I just, I say it every year, we go over this, but I think this is a great tool for the district and something, I see Charlie's here, Charlie Schneider, your wife Tammy, who's instrumental in helping to get this done. I see Charlie's here, Charlie Schneider, your wife Tammy was instrumental in helping to get this done for, in the district and, uh, so, uh, appreciate you doing the updates and the due diligence. It'll be interesting to see next year how close you come. I know when we first made this, we had some, uh, modifiers for, uh, cost inflation and what going out. But thirty years is a long time, so you don't know how, how well that tracks. And so it's nice to be updated every year and it's a neat thing for our district.
Yes, thanks for the update, I appreciate it also. And just for some of us board members that were around at the time, we did actually present on our third year plan, um, at the state convention a few years back. So, thank you very much. Hope you have a good one.
Okay. Student enrollment update, second Friday in January count.
Uh, Tony is attending a different school function tonight, so she wasn't able to be here. But she shared the information with the board and you can see that, uh, our count actually went up a little bit. Uh, once we're able to count, uh, the students who, uh, were off because of, uh, the holiday break. And then also, um, we have, uh, a student who hasn't been able to attend due to sickness. Uh, once they're able to amend the count, you'll see that the total number of students, uh, student body count will be three thousand four hundred and eleven, up from three thousand four hundred and six in September. Now, several years you've seen a higher enrollment count in the fall and that a little bit of a drop off in January. So I know Leah and her budget projections, and we just had a mission budget hearing, um, this really drives a lot with our finances. So we're gonna continue to watch it closely, uh, but it is, um, it is good to see that that enrollment continues to increase slightly.
Jim?
Just make sure they don't get away before the third Friday come out.
In September?
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Heather?
Thank you for the, uh, past data, I always see those trends in the numbers, so please thank Tonya for that.
Letter C, professional development report, I assume that would be Brian?
Yeah, Brian, go ahead.
Alright, well, thank you. Uh, the background that was put into Board Docs is to really kinda give you a quick update on where we are as far as what's planned for this school year, if it's already happened. Uh, most recently, we just got off of our mid-year professional development day, uh, which, um, we've been doing, uh, an ed camp style professional development now, uh, going on for four years. And we continue to see, uh, very good feedback from our staff for that type of delivery, delivery at the end of the school year. Uh, something we implemented this year was we did a very quick fall staff, uh, feedback, uh, form following our fall PD with the intention of replicating, uh, that as much as possible at the mid-year PD. Just to get a sense as to, um, how our in-year, in-district professional development offerings are meeting the needs of our staff. And, um, as you can see from the fall feedback information, uh, to our mid-year feedback, the staff, uh, are, are overall very satisfied with the type and variety of professional development that we are offering in the district. Uh, one thing that we have heard, uh, through the student perception survey, uh, and also, uh, from our listening sessions is we need to continue to offer a variety of professional development offerings for staff. Uh, one-size model truly does not fit all, um, so we tried to do that. Uh, the risk of doing that is you become too varied, uh, and, and there's too many offerings and those types of things. Uh, but I think we've landed upon a nice balance. One of the areas we do see, um, requests, uh, for, um, our opportunities for staff to go outside of the district for professional development. Uh, and we've taken what I think is a pretty intentional approach to balancing that with the needs of, um, staff to be in the classroom in front of students, but also to get out of the district, to hear from experts outside of our district. Uh, with the idea that they bring that information back and share it with their colleagues, uh, either at building level or at the district level. Uh, and, and that's really kinda that focus of that mid-year professional development offering. So, um, rather than go through everything in the attachments, um, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions that people have at this point in time on what you have in front of you.
Dan?
I am really happy that you're sending folks down to the, the MAP conference, that's a great conference, I think to that. Is it too early to, to ask about, um, your plans for next year?
No, it's actually, it's not. Uh, we usually are planning in some cases a year to two years out, uh, if we're gonna have somebody come into the district. Uh, for midpoint, uh, not midpoint, excuse me, for, um, professional development next year, uh, we are going to be starting a little bit different in the fall. Instead of having a, um, a keynote speaker come in from outside of the district right away in August, we're gonna handle that in-house, which we've done over the years. Uh, and we actually are bringing in, uh, Dr. Anthony Mohammed is gonna be coming in in October, uh, to present. Uh, he is a, um, educational consultant, uh, who I've had the pleasure of seeing a handful of times. Uh, he speaks to culture and the challenges, um, with change that happen, um, and, uh, and how you can, and, um, meet students' needs in a way that helps build a culture, um, when, uh, you have different initiatives that you're, you're taking on. So, uh, we're excited to have, uh, Dr. Mohammed come and meet with us in October next year. Based off of the feedback that, um, we continue to receive, uh, we'll continue to offer, you know, ed camp style at some point in time, most likely in January. It should be noted that this spring, we're doing a more formalized, um, needs assessment specific to professional development. We do that every other year to try and balance among the surveys that our staff have to take. Um, and, uh, you know, now that we are, uh, partway through our strategic plan in year one, uh, it's a good time to do that as well.
Priscilla? How many staff and, um, I guess just teachers administration are able to go to the Model Schools Conference?
So we, uh, we typically book that, uh, for, I wanna say it's sixteen, a total of fifteen or sixteen, I have to double check that. But, um, I know this year, um, we may be taking a slightly smaller group due, due to some scheduling conflicts that staff have. Um, you know, and this would be our third year in a row of doing that. So upon returning, I will, would be some discussion as to, you know, do we continue to do that the following year? Do we take a year off from that, um, you know, again, based off of feedback?
Jim?
Can you just tell us what, um, how you address bullying with the professional development this year and what your plans are for next year?
So, um, right now, the main way that we address the needs as they come up throughout the school year is through our staff, um, having the opportunity to do their, their ed camp conversations. Uh, in the fall, our, um, speakers, uh, were presenting on social emotional learning. And while bullying was not the primary focus, there were different elements of that that came into, uh, both our three fall speakers and the impact that that has. And then when Dr. Clem was again at the midpoint of the year, here in January, again, while it wasn't the main focus of his presentation, uh, there was components of that that were included. Um, you know, had we, we have not done what I would consider a, um, specific bullying-focused professional development opportunity for the full staff, um, that, uh, would be part of our planning process. We don't have that laid out yet, but, um, with the work the board has done with the value statement, again, based off of our staff feedback, we would consider that and determine the best way in which to do that, you know, based on the information that we have.
I'd like to add to that, um, we, you know, we did also the trauma-sensitive school training for every single staff member, um, which also feeds into that. We will be creating the bullying action plan, um, now that we have the inventory completed. And you can see through the inventory, there's been a lot of initiatives already, uh, but certainly that's something to build upon, it's not an ending point. Um, our school counselors, um, regularly attend the state school counseling conference also, and I, I know there's, um, multiple opportunities there. So what we have, like Brian said, well, we haven't had a specific PD day solely dedicated to bullying. Um, what we've done with much of our culture and climate and professional development training, um, does feed into those aspects as well.
Dan?
This is a toughie, but, um, do you, have you thought about ways of measuring the impact in the classroom of our professional development? You know, how much are the teachers actually applying what they, they learned? And what kind of professional development, um, seems to have the most impact on instruction?
You're, you're right in that that is a huge thing to measure, it's, it's hard to quantify that. Um, over the years, we have asked staff to identify the types of professional development opportunities that have the biggest impact on their practice back in, back in the classroom. And, um, over the years, and some of this is anecdotal in nature, um, the opportunity to collaborate with their colleagues um, is an area that really comes up pretty high on their list and the opportunity to have that time, uh, which is one of the main reasons that we shifted to this ed camp style professional development. As well as why, um, uh, it would have been probably five, six years ago, uh, when we started identifying staff to go out of the district to attend professional development, um, having the discussion on the front end about how that is gonna come back and be shared with their colleagues back in their buildings. Again, time and time again, our staff respond that, you know, that time for the discussion uh, and to, um, develop really how they would implement that in their classroom, are the types of things that, that have the biggest impact to them. Uh, and again, that's, that's part of the reason why, uh, we had a presenter that came in in January, come back. It was more of a Q and A discussion type session. But, um, as far as placing a numeric value on it or a direct correlation to, I attended this one professional learning opportunity and I saw this specific student achievement gain in classroom is, is a hard thing to remember.
I do think the surveys though that Brian is now sending out, after each PD day, that measures, um, the staff perception of the effectiveness. I think that's a good data point and we'll be able, you know, we just really started it, but we'll be able to start making some comparisons moving forward.
Jim?
One of the sessions I went to down at the Washington Convention, um, was, it was in Musqueo, right? So the district would have it's like, their fruits are dead, I mean, it's crazy what they don't want to say. But anyway, one of the things they came up with was they actually asked the teacher what their learning style was. And it changed how they did the PD. I don't know if you've ever done that, but that's just the idea to throw out there and think about.
Yeah, that's, thank, thank you for that, Jim. And, um, uh, we, we have over the years asked staff, what are, what are the delivery modes that most appeal to them? Uh, and that, and does this help shape our, our, our offerings throughout the year?
One, uh, one final thing to add, uh, this document, I don't believe it made this list. Um, our school district will be hosting adolescent mental health training, um, through our school safety grants and, um, the Department of Justice. And I think we're slated to have, what Brian, two hundred and fifty?
Two fifty, yeah.
Two hundred and fifty, um, teachers attend that from our school district. And I believe that's June tenth?
Eleven and twelve.
Okay.
Ten, eleven or eleven and twelve, you're correct, it did begin on, let's just understand my.
Super. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, next, summer school discussion, and since Mary's right up at the front, I assume that you were going to talk about.
Well, as Joe said before, summer school is well underway of planning. Susan created such a great foundation for our summer school with a few tweaks we made last year to adding the four-period day and then having all incoming KGO River Heights. Um, those, we're not making any more programmatical changes like that, it worked very, very smoothly last year. You, um, in Board Docs, you'll see when summer school dates are, we've, we've set our Friday fun days, we're calling them now. Um, going to Fulton's workshop and the Rosedale Museum, going to Vision Quest, having a track and field day at River Heights. And then, um, taking a visit to the Steyer Farm, which is probably always our best-attended field trip, Friday fun day. So, um, we have those things set in place, three new courses this year, mindset mathematics, a graphic novel course, and then a Mung language and culture course. Um, have been working with Vincent Jung from the Mung Mutual Association, and he connected us with actually a parent, um, from our district who is going to provide a course for session one, um, targeting, um, fifth grade through middle schools. Is, so, um, really hoping that we'll get some good attendance with that. And I know that's something that the board has been looking for and the committee has been looking for, so really excited about that opportunity. We have, um, as Joe mentioned also, Stacy Berg has worked summer school, so she's again working, um, the high school. So she knows one summer school rolls the, the processes. But summer school will be all planned, is all planned before summer school actually starts. Everything from, you know, all the way through summer camps. So once the summer school itself starts, it's really just the manpower and being there and kind of that day-to-day operation. But it, it's well underway with the planning, so. Any questions?
Any questions? David?
Anticipating from the staff, do they need the?
No, we actually have quite a few staff already filled. Um, we already sent, January second, sent out interest with staff and that, I mean, I sent it and I got five emails within about five minutes of staff. And it's, most of our recurring staff send back right away. Um, I reached out to a couple of people that I know have taught courses and they said, oh yeah, I'll teach that again. Um, so there are a few courses, we're still looking for staff, but we have not posted on weekend yet. And we typically have some out of district people, um, but it's, I would say probably seventy-five percent filled with our staff already. So that, that have expressed interest in teaching.
Dan?
I just wanna say thank you for all the hard work you've put in to make this a success that it is. It's a great program, an asset to our district.
Very much so it is, yeah. And it's a collaboration of lots of people and lots of work over the years.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, next, review strategic planning goals and major activities for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
So in Board Docs, uh, board members can review, um, this quarterly update in terms of the strategic planning goals that we have. And, uh, I think it's about, what is it, eight pages long now? And it continues to grow each quarter. And you can see, um, there, there's already a few that have already been marked complete, uh, with the green bar, for instance, the school perceptions engagement survey. Uh, but there's other ones that, uh, really are just in the process of, of beginning. And, um, I guess at this point, instead of going through each item by item, just open up for questions, see if the board has any particular thoughts or questions about the update. We're gonna have to put page, page numbers on this, Jamie.
Seeing none?
Just a comment, um, the, the session I went to with Mr. Ski and Roy was actually about strategic planning and how they did it and stuff. And one of the things they did is they had like, uh, I don't know what you call it, like scorecard. On their website, where probably you could access the strategic plans, individual steps and see how the progress was. So it was very transparent to the public, it was a really useful thing for them. And, and, you know, letting people know where they are and what they were doing. So I don't know if it's possible for us to do something like that, but that's just an idea to throw out there.
So two things, um, one, it, it is available on Board Docs, but I like that idea. We have a spot for the strategic plan in our website. It'd be real simple to upload this, which I know is not a scorecard, but it still would provide that accountability piece. And then at the end of the year, you know, it's a five-year plan, I think it's getting to the end of the year, um, and designating, you know, those annual, uh, goal pieces, I think makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, they had, they have both, they, they two up with a separate one-year plan every year based on the five-year plan plus the five-year, they have basically two scorecards. How they're doing this year, how they're doing that.
And I, and that's essentially what we have too.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think that's a good idea. Uh, that was from Ski, well, I'll see what they have and we'll model something up. Thanks, Jim.
Dan?
I really appreciate the quarterly update that you're providing us. Ian? I know it's probably a little early to say this, but are we, it looks like we're making good progress in all areas.
Yeah, de, I mean, definitely some areas are more complete than others, but, um, I, I do feel very, um, very comfortable that we are gonna meet the goals that we said we were gonna meet. And we have a ton of people working on a ton of stuff. Uh, but it's not just about checking the box, it's about quality behind that work. And, and that's what I really like about our strategic plan. Uh, about the only one that, um, we talked about possibly putting on hold was the, uh, graduate profile. And I know we talked about it after we had the school perception survey and, uh, the concern about workload, um, cause we, we do wanna make that a very collaborative process. Uh, so we continue to talk about. So we continue to talk about that one a little bit. And we're trying to decide, you know, what an action plan might look like. We want to make sure that we get teacher voice in that thing too. So that would be about the only one that I think may be not completed by the end of this school year. But I'm, I'm still thinking that it might be possible. We'll see how it goes this spring.
Dan? The keynote at the conference by McLeod was really good. And I thought there was a lot of stuff that he was presenting and talking about. And he did say that this, you know, should go into a graduate profile. And a lot of stuff to consider there, so. Okay. Review anti-bullying action plan and inventory of SDMA bullying initiatives. First, that a question. Chris?
Just an interest of maybe sometimes we have got a plan that we put together. This one is working off pretty well. And I really liked the elementary, middle school, high school focus. That's really helping out a lot. But I wonder sometimes if we develop plans along the way that weren't in the original strategic plan, that they should not be added. Because we've done a lot of work in addition to what was on plan that we created that is related to that plan that could really fill out, especially some of the ideas that complete some of the processes, like especially with the social and emotional learning and the task force you put together on bullying and some of the development that we're doing there. If this is a document that we're thinking about using to communicate to the district at large, I mean, there's plenty more things we could put in there that is actually building towards achieving those pillars that just didn't happen to be in the strategic plan. I mean, there's a lot of good work that's come up along the way that I think really did fill it out a little bit. So that would just be my only suggestion is that when you make plans that operate over the long term, there's lots of internal development that kind of improve on that plan, and that makes you guys look better. And it also makes it look like we're actually growing into the pillars to a degree that isn't represented just by filling off the boxes that we said we were going to do. In some cases, you actually do more than you said you were going to do. And I think that helps really build the kind of confidence that there's a comprehensive way in which we're addressing those pillars. And they're actually meaningful, not just in terms of doing what we said we were going to do, but actually fulfilling a much more holistic way in which we're thinking about how those pillars add to our student learning. So just that suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, especially when you consider the summative report card, I guess, at the end of the school year. Because you're right, that bullying initiative, even though it somewhat fits under pillar two, well, obviously it fits under pillar two, student social, emotional wellness, but it certainly wasn't one of the main bullet points that we were going to create a action plan and, you know, inventory and take all these steps. So documenting that we did that, I think that makes sense. I would also caution the board that we try not to do that very often because when you look at the number of items that are in our annual plan, you know, you consider how much time and other resources we put into bullying. Certainly, we had to do that. But I think that might be the example why it's important for us to use a strategic plan as our guiding light. But then when we have those issues, Chris, I think that absolutely makes sense. You know, it does fit within the pillars. Let's get it on the list. And I'll add that for the next quarterly update. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say about the bullying update?
That's the beauty of our process. Sorry, I mean, I know we're ready to move on. But this isn't just one of those strategic plans that you put up on a shelf. I mean, ours really does have the ability to be alive and to be mobile. And we said that when we built this. And I think we're seeing that. I'm really proud of the work that our staff has done.
I appreciate the thoroughness of it and keep going. I just, Jim and Chris have focused on communicating it to the public so they get sort of a little idea of what we're actually doing. Okay, next, planning the board's promotion for the value statement on bullying. Amy announced that I'm not sure Chris's points went to the strategic plan.
I do have a few things to say about the bullying before we move on.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I, okay, I think there was a confusion there. So right now, we're on, which one are we on, Amy?
We can do the review of anti-bullying action plans. Is that what you have?
All right, good. So in board docs, there's two things. One is the bullying action plan, which we put together last fall. And then it was updated on December 9th because of the board's desire to do the value statement, and we're still wrapping up that work. But if you look in the middle of that document, you can see the next steps. So the next step was by January 31st, we were going to have an inventory that lists the specific efforts made in terms of our bullying initiatives. And that's what's also attached to board docs. And you can see from that inventory, there's a lot of great work that's been happening. But what we need to do now is we need to take some time over the next quarter or so and really evaluate those initiatives. Because we've talked about this before, we have a lot going on, but if we're not doing it in a comprehensive way, then we're not getting maximum effectiveness out of it. So that's what the team will be doing over the next couple of months, is we'll be evaluating the inventory and then identifying whether there might be some gaps and there might be some overlaps. And from that point, then we'll be able to develop recommendations for possible implementation as soon as the 2020, 2021 school year. So that's kind of the roadmap for where we are and where we're going. But are there any specific questions about the inventory? Certainly, if you have ideas for the action plan, the recommendations moving forward, you can say those now. But I think there's going to be a lot of time for that once we evaluate the inventory as well.
Chris?
Just one thing, it's nice to see that there is some up and down movement in terms of the way in which we create the policy so that it's for students, but actually comes from students as well. And when we first started discussing this, I remember that Jim asked Principal Drake if he could get a report of what the student suggestions were for what they would like to see implemented in the bullying policy. And we didn't get that report, but I'm sure that it, Principal Drake, is he here today?
He's at the scheduling event.
I know that he met with some of those students, but it would be really helpful, especially from a student perspective, to know that their voices were heard and that they're a part of the process. And that's left out of this incredibly comprehensive inventory. And one, it would be nice to get a report of what the student suggestions were so to get a sense of what their ideas were for shaping that bullying policy. And two, it'd be nice to see those included in terms of that action plan. There was outreach to Saga, but I think it was mostly that they were communicating directly to Saga what the bullying policies were going to be. So incorporating a student perspective and seeing that that is somehow incorporated into the bullying policy would be a great way of helping students through their primary process.
Okay. I do think if you look at the high school initiatives, the second bullet point talks about the bullying administrators followed up with the high school students who spoke at the board meeting. And then I think it's the fifth bullet point where it talks about the administration met with the Saga group on October 24th to listen to their concerns and improve lines of communication. Also, our student council has initiated a student's voice, student voice committee. They had a listening session on November 14th, and they were shared with the building leadership team on December 11th through the student council. So I thought there was something else in there too. Oh, the school counselors met with the Saga group during lunch on January 22nd, talking about registration and any concerns for students as they prepare to come to MHS. So the students definitely are being involved. But what we are saying is you'd like to actually see the recommendations that are coming from the students.
Okay, sharing with the board and then if they could be somehow like an artifact of that.
Sure.
Of like where they showed up in terms of the bullying policy. Because sometimes it feels like when you put things into a survey and collect feedback, if you don't see any direct outcome of that, it doesn't necessarily encourage you to want it more. And I think we want to see more collaboration between students and backing the illustration and creating these policies that are for students.
Great. Anything else?
Claire?
Just to kind of take off that, I think in the initiative, it actually lists obviously all the activities, but I agree with Chris, and that'd be nice to see more of a reporter. Notes essentially from what came out of that. I think people feel like their opinion is more valued, so I'm in agreement with you on that, Chris.
Got it. Thank you.
Chris, put your hand up. Dan? I just wanted to commend the high school or student council for establishing that student voice. I think that's a great opportunity for students to continue to give feedback to what's really happening in the hallways and corners and things like that that normally don't get filtered up or get voiced. And I hope that they, you know, they do that, not just quarterly, but maybe, maybe having on such a schedule that students get comfortable with that student voice meeting and feel free to come and talk with folks. And that would be, I'd like that, thank you very much.
Yeah, the students are doing a great job with that. I do want to point out too, on the middle school list in the inventory, the third bullet from the bottom of the middle school portion, I was able to attend a staff meeting at the middle school. And you might have seen an activity like this before, but it was a dots matrix activity where they had a list of all the students in the middle school. And teachers had colored dots and they, and they put a dot next to the student's name if they felt that they had a personal relationship with that student. And it was really eye-opening to see that, you know, some students, there was, you know, a large number of dots next to their names. And there were a few students that didn't have many dots. And you can see in the report that there, any student that had two or less dots were actually assigned a staff member, and then the staff member implemented what they call a two-by-ten strategy, where they're going to meet with the student for 10 days in a row, two minutes of purposeful conversation, and really develop that meaningful connection between the student and the staff member. So I really applaud Mr. Betcher and the middle school staff for doing that activity. Those are the kind of things that make a large difference in the culture of our schools.
Anybody else? Chris?
I just wanted to second what he said. Like that, when Mr. Betcher told me about that activity, it just, it, I got the hard thing knew how to respond because I just think it's, yeah, it's amazing to think that there are students that, you know, there's the opportunity to engage them and insight, so insightful, it was, it's great. I don't know, do they do something similar to that in the high school or?
They've done multiple culturally activities like that. I don't know if Mr. Drake has done the dots activity. Mr. Munoz has done something similar to that a while back. But, you know, hearing about it is pretty neat, but to actually be there and observe it and watch the teachers go over to the sheets and then see the results of the dots, it was, it was pretty amazing.
Great view. Okay, thank you. I'd just like to thank you for the thoroughness of the report and all the things that are there. And I'm looking forward to hearing more. And again, I want to let our, let our staff know that we appreciate all that they're doing, our mental health staff, as well as our teachers and all the people that work with these students every single day. Okay, now we'll go to planning for the board promotion of the value statement on bullying.
Okay, I had not received anything, but Chris had an email address issue with my email or something, so I have shared with him my email address. And, but good job on bringing this script, Chris. I didn't receive anything else.
Great, that was good. Keep it simple, focus on kids. And just giving the energy of seeing our kids at school, you know, engaging with each other in diverse climates is the message we're looking for. Because it's not that the bullying policy is as important as that it has outcomes in terms of transforming the experience of kids when they come through the school. So it goes, gives them understanding that we actually have a good environment we're building on the strong that we're already doing. And that our voice is just to ensure that it keeps on moving forward. I like that idea, just send out one person talking because one thing we know in making any type of promotional video is that too many, was it too many cooks spoiled or something like that? Keep it simple, simple messaging, one strong voice, and focus on the images that you're trying to convey. And if you can do that, you're going to have a successful promotion.
I'm fine with it, and I'm fine with doing the speaking, but I also want other board members to be involved if they so choose because it is a board we all voted for. So, I mean, I'm glad to take the helm and, you know, and do that. But I also want other board members to know that if they want to pardon it or have any other ideas, it would be great to hear them. Bishop?
Could we all just like, standing there solemnly? But like, you know, just show that we're willing to?
Chris?
To convey that ideally, you could just have shots of board members at school events, like graduation or other events that they're participating in. That gives the sense that we're there and we care about the kids rather than... Because I was trying to think about how you can have us each like do a line, but that just would be too, would break it up too much. And having us stand behind you is too weird, like. So thinking about ways in which that we can be part of some of the visioning, I think there's plenty of images that maybe the district has of us, you know, participating in some of these events, I think that would be okay. I don't necessarily need to be in it as a pro for one person who doesn't need to have this image in the promotion.
David?
I just take the length of, you know, 30 seconds. By the time you get the board members in there, you're going to lose some of the effect of the kids and stuff. So I guess I like the original intent, we had Chris with one person. Focus on the kids and take the state and help.
We have some super sound talents at A.S.C. students who figure out what they can do.
I think we'll probably just do it here at A.S.C.
I was thinking, Katie, is that something that your department could work in? Or do you have other people?
Well, we can, we can figure it out on our end.
Okay.
We'll take your.
Okay.
Frank can do it.
No, it's something that's been worked, it's been good.
Okay.
I mean, I can check with Mr. Drake, but I don't want to put more on the students' plates either.
Okay, all right. So any other discussion on that? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, next, board, administration, state education convention reports.
Oh, and then the state. Staff physical examinations, policy.
I just took this right from there.
All right, so it's policy 523.1, staff physical examinations, first reading.
It was the most updated one I thought, right here. But, okay, I'm sorry. So. Okay, policy 523.1, staff physical examinations, first reading. Jim?
So in reading this policy, I think it's written very, very narrowly to basically allow the district to do a tuberculosis test. And I think really beyond that. Because every time it refers to examinations, it always talks about tuberculosis. And that's really the only subject matter or any type of test or, you know, physical whatever that they discuss is. So I think we need to add language in there that states that they're going to be doing a physical examination that said would include but not be limited to, and then list some of the things that we're going to have done at the meal thing. And I think once we do that, then we'll be okay in order to actually implement, you know, approve the, what's, the, whatever we call it, pre-employment screening, and then go ahead with it. So I think we just need to make this more, more specific, more broader, include exactly what we're going to be doing with that policy so we know our policy and our practice are aligned.
Yeah, this is problematic with state law. And I put that in the board docs today, up in the other section. You know, the state law definitely says that people have to have the tuberculosis screening. But the way it's written is, it's written where it, it's written as that would be part of a more comprehensive exam. But then, yeah, the state law doesn't say anything. So I think what Jim's suggesting makes sense.
And every time it refers to the physical exam, it goes back and talks about tuberculosis. It's very, very narrowly written and very specific on tuberculosis. We need to broaden it, make sure we include the whole suite of stuff that we'd like to have done in the exam, so policy manages practice. Well, however you want to say it, yeah.
Good, we can do that. I like that language too, may include but not limited to.
Chris?
I agree. And the first line makes it seem as though that the employees have a choice as to who will do the screening because it was really primarily engineered towards TB screening. So the language should be specific according to the approved pre-employment screening. Would you call it a suite or something like that?
Pre-employment screening provider?
Yeah, so it was like, this is clearly letting the employee go to their health provider and get the requisite information regarding their TB, but we're after something else. There's a very specific screen they're going to have to go through, specific tests, that they don't have an option. It's the one that we have chosen for them and making it clear that this is part of the physical examination they're onboarding would be important, I think. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we need a line in here that the employee shall complete the examination. As I said before, a qualified medical practitioner, it should say by a district approved or district provided practitioner that would take care of that. So they would have to know who we tell them.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I think it can just be whatever, whoever the district is contracted with.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we need to name whoever. We just need to say it's district provided.
Exactly.
So if we have flexibility to change.
Dan?
I looked at a neighbor in the district and in their policy on this, they decided that it would be done within 30 days of employment. Are we saying that this has to be done before we'll sign a contract or, you know, issue a contract or, because that could be problematic too. If we're going to wait for them to do that, they could, they would still be job hunting.
Sure. Yeah. So you're, you're saying to wait until, to give them 30 days within the employment, like have them start prior to?
That's what the, the policy said, that it would be completed within 30 days of employment.
My only concern with that would be like with having them starting to perform the job responsibilities without having prior knowledge as to whether or not they can perform those with or without accommodations. So I think about like a lift.
And a TB exam.
Yeah, and we don't, we actually at this point do not start anyone until they have the TB exam completed. So we make sure that all those things are in place and I would prefer to do that with this as well, to have the pre-employment physical completed prior to them starting with us.
So I agree with what you're saying, Jim, but how can we add that in when we did not approve the pre-employment screening prior?
Well, we have to change the policy to be able to approve that.
But this was just a first reading, so we could have made the recommendations.
We have to have the policy approved before we can actually do the screenings. So if we're doing screenings without having the policy or the lawsuits and other front stuff, we have to do the policy, then we have to go back and approve the screenings.
Dan?
Two, two things. One, there's nothing in here that talks about exceptions. And the other thing is by policy or rule, the district may require employees to complete additional exams at specific intervals. So we're going to create or basically something so that employees can come back and say, well, you're just picking on me, you're making me get an exam every so often and you're not doing it for anybody else, that kind of stuff.
Right. If we wanted to implement additional screenings, either a policy or rule would be created to direct that.
I definitely agree the policy needs to be more specific, not as narrow, because my biggest concern is if it's, you know, too vague, they're going to think they just have to get a TB test or they're going to think that they don't have to do it. And then, you know, that, that would be something that, you know, could be problematic, especially if it's state law, they're supposed to have a prerequisite.
If the board prefers to wait on approving the agreement, that's absolutely fine. We are in the process of hiring a few folks. In my mind, the policy does not need to be changed before the agreement. What the policy states would still be accurate. Prior to beginning of employment, all new employees will present a certificate of TB examination with negative results. That piece is, is fine. Now, I do think the policy should be improved, but I guess I don't see it as a prerequisite to change the policy prior to implementing the screening, but that's really the board's discretion. Either way, it's fine with us.
So do you want to undertake rewriting the policy? Would you like one of us to do it and submit it for next meeting? Would you vote it? Would you use a vote on possibility?
Sure.
Okay.
Happy to.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is we're going to have it tweaked so that it looks good and it's not narrow and more specific. And then we'll vote on it at the next meeting and then we can also vote on the pre-employment as well at the same time.
Correct.
Dan?
And can you, you know, if you're issuing, you know, you need to get job hires done, can you make it those hires in the meantime, the next week's conditional upon giving this? Whatever, I'm not sure.
Well, the TB test has to be done. We're not going to let anybody work here with our kids without the TB test.
Right.
Well, we have a policy for that, so that can go forward.
Right.
But for the rest of it?
Right. I mean, but just to understand, so we're going to be hiring a custodian and, you know, if the board wants us to wait until any pre-screening until the board approves the policy, you're going to hire someone without a lifting test and that's fine, but, you know, that's.
Well, I think the language in here about the, whatever it said, that they can have follow-up examinations and we just, oh, we have to do it after the hiring. That's just part of, I mean, that's kind of redundant that after the hire, they can be asked to take an examination and just let them know that's part of it.
We can do that.
But it's also a new employee. So, and we talked about this before, we're not going to have employees that have been hired go back and then redo the test. So I think it would fall in that situation. We're not going to hire somebody. I mean, I don't think that's fair. You hire somebody and then, you know, month on road saying, now you gotta do this test and you don't fail it and, you know, what do you do now? And I think you have to vote, kind of like you have the current employees now. They're not going to be taking it. So with it not approved.
Are we clear on what's going to happen? We're going to bring the newly revised.
Who's updating that?
So my understanding is that I'm going to take the suggestions from tonight, update the policy and bring the policy for approval at the February 10th meeting, February 10th. In the meantime, you know, the board has a motion on the table to potentially approve an agreement with the Mayo Clinic. If that does not get approved tonight, then we will just continue forward with requiring new employees to get a TB test like our current policy says. And then, you know, whatever else happens, happens.
Well, my motion to table was to bring it back off the table after we approve the policy. That's what I said.
Oh, okay.
So does that mean that you're making a motion to go back?
No, I'm not making a motion. I'm saying the vote we voted on was to table the, table the, whatever, pre-employment.
After the?
Until after the policy was approved.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, because it's only a first reading.
Yes, which means next time if we, when you do the agenda order, you put that first and you put the pre-screens and then if we pass the policy, we do the pre-screen.
Tricia?
So the additional information we were sent about the pre-employment physicals, on the bottom it says position of equipment as detailed in the SDMA job description. So that's already an existing job description then?
Yes.
So, so could we then ask them to, you know, to complete the lift test based on that?
So we're, we're going to have to run the lift test here? Who's going to?
My house. No, no, but I'm just saying like if we have that and you're like, I don't know, do you just ask them, hey, can you lift up your fat house? And they say yes, and you're like, okay.
Currently, we're not asking. We're, all we're requiring is the TB test. So we have that as part of the, their job description and that is a requirement, but we're not, there's no way for us to, to check that.
Dan?
But if they can't perform the job as described in the job description, then that's grounds for termination, isn't it?
Perhaps. Some things may need to be accommodated.
Yeah, oh, yeah, of course, of course. But like for custodial, those kinds of people, they can't meet the job descrip, in terms of the job description, then.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Not to narrow the scope even more, but right now the way it stands, if we have an employee that tests positive on the TB screening, are we on the hook for the x-ray then too with radiography?
Yes.
Because there's advanced testing because there's a pulse positive on the screening that's used a lot of times.
Right, that's part of state law.
So are we required to do that phase?
Yep, that's part of state law. Okay, thank you.
Now, Board Administration State Education Convention Record. Great, it's all in your, there's a lot of information to read and some links if you're interested in looking at that, some books to read that I know that Tricia had suggested that you wanted to read. And did you have a legislative report to hand out too?
Well, yeah, and I can just say that, and it's like I said last year too, I, this truly is the best conference that I've ever been to. Like, every session I want to go to, every minute that I have the opportunity to be able to listen to people who are on the front lines, they, I mean, all the school board members I've ever talked to, the administrators I've ever talked to are just really nice, willing to share their information and provide any kind of feedback. You know, they have a vested interest in, you know, Medicare state, you know, doing well. So it's just a very supportive environment. And I, the sessions that I attended this year, and we have all of our reports there, I was looking at them, I tried to do very practical, like, things that would be, you know, like something, information that I would specifically use. The legislative reports that I handed out, very, you know, matter of fact information that the session just went over that. Did you get one? Yeah, I mean, we have, everything's already, I'm not going to read all through it, but I highly, highly would encourage other people to, to attend because I just think it's, it's a lot better than bullying.
Dan?
Yeah, I just want to know too that the whole, if you log into the WASP site and you look at the schedule for the convention, many of the different sessions have attachments that, for the powerpoints and things that they had. So not all of them do. And some of them probably will be coming in, you know, this week or so, but that's also another way to go back and look. And even if there was a session that any of us attended, you could probably look and see if there's information available that you can look at, just get an idea of what was discussed.
Yeah, those are on the WASP, the links are on the WASP, if I may add. Tricia?
I was also going to mention that one of the best sessions I went to was on onboarding new school board members. Emily or Kate, I would love to explore that process. The WASP presenters had a lot of really great ideas. And I know that there's a lot of great information on the WASP website for onboarding. One of the things that they mentioned to us was, they gave us a sample agenda from this Toma School District and in, so they break down onboarding into three different areas, pre-election, post-election and ongoing orientation. So there's consistent conversation about onboarding information. But then in December, the Toma School District has what they call a, just a welcome and prospective board member workshop. And it goes through all the information regarding how to run for a school board position, but then also what the expectations are. And to answer those questions in a, in a low pressure format, I guess. Anyway.
Anybody else? Jim?
So one of the sessions I went to was there's changes at the federal level and how you have to support financial stuff. And it's going to be really interesting because the way they're making it put the data out, but just you guys have been releasing training where you have all the new stuff in March for school boards so we know it and understand it and can talk to the community about it. So come March when that stuff is available, we should probably train ourselves on it. Whether it's as an agenda item or a retreat item or something, but I think really you need to know and understand that stuff.
I just want to thank the school district for allowing me to go. I always heard privilege to go. As everybody has talked about, it is a great convention. There is something for everyone. And I guess the best part, not only sessions, is like Tricia says, meeting with all the other people and finding out that sometimes we're not alone in some of our issues that we're dealing with and so forth. So it's a great place to network, learn, grow. So, yeah, so I'd recommend it to any board member. Chris?
In the previous board, there was a number of items that they were, I thought there was going to be, there was going to be voted on. One of them was the mascot issue. There were some other things. Is that, am I confused about this?
Delegate assembly.
Yeah, the delegate. And Dan can speak to that.
Could you tell us about what went down and some of the discussion there? But if it was in your report, I don't know how I understood.
I just made a brief statement that all of the, all of the proposals for WASP to advocate for, these were basically proposals that WASP would take on as an advocate for in the state. All of them passed except for the mascot.
Wow, that's so Wisconsin. What was the discussion? Was this a straight vote of like?
Yeah, the major, I think the major issue in that was several people spoke to issues of global control.
Interesting. All right. But was it very good, good discussion?
Oh, yes. Very likely discussion on that.
I bet that was. All right. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Review extracurricular staff contract requests. And that is basically just for information. Any questions? Seeing none. Review items related to next meeting dates, board committees and reports. Again, that's pretty much information. And then we are going to do a book study tonight and we're going to limit it to probably 10 minutes because there's not so many pages tonight to discuss. And it's like some lists of stuff, so.
Lately members, your excuse, you're welcome to state, but thank you.